Out of seventy-one, nobody else replied. That does not...
Sarms is absentee.
Yes.
Oops, absentee, absentee.
Will you ask him if he forgot to turn the TV on? Because he could be videotaping us right now and we don't know it.
Okay, we're on. All right, we'll take it on face. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Muscatine County Board Supervisor meeting for October seventh, two thousand nineteen. I called the meeting to order. First item of business is to approve the agenda.
Will be approved.
Santos's move, Scott has seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
It is approved. Item number three is to receive comments from the public. Anyone from the public who do speak with the board on a topic not already on our agenda may come forward, but since there are no members of the public here, I'll assume that no one wishes to. Item number four is discussion and possible action to approve claims dated October seventh, two thousand nineteen, in the amount of three hundred nineteen thousand, nine hundred seventy-eight dollars and forty-four cents.
Will be approved.
Second. Scott has moved to approve. Santos has seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. Item number five, item for planning and zoning administrator Eric Furnas. I'm amazed reviewing special use permits. Good morning, Eric.
Good morning. I have two special use permits that were granted last Friday by the Board of Adjustment. One, fifteen seventy-eight Cedar Street in Moscow, was to allow a mobile home to be brought on to a property with an existing dwelling for the care of the owner's aging parents with some health issues. It's one of our special use permits that's available for review. And the other was to approve a bulk storage site just east of West Liberty on Highway six. That's sixteen seventy-four Highway six. It's an old co-op location. It had been used previously for propane storage and been vacant for several years. There was a special use permit for that type of use to be used again. So, totally appropriate. This is going to be a bulk LP storage tank by one of our local distributors as a staging area. It's not even that far. It's right by the little drop right next to John D. dealership.
Oh, sure.
It used to be LP storage there. Most of our IT would be back to be approved by special use.
Yep, I got that. Well, I think Doug, you just had forwarded to us another, just copying us on a request that Dr. Askew made to the state. Scott, do you have anything?
I just had the same. That was all.
Doug?
That and the only committee meeting I had.
Okay. Scott, any committee?
On Monday the thirtieth, I had Constellation Board and heard talk about the turnout and so on of the state event that was held there. And they don't have any final numbers on it yet, but it was very well received and forceful with the weather and all the events. And they'll have some final numbers on how that whole event went, but very positive impact. People that had never been on the Mississippi River took a little ride in the facilities with the Merrills. So, really enjoyed it. Really enjoyed it. So, I'll have more to come on that when I have some numbers.
Yeah, it was a nice event. I didn't get to go over it. Santos, you were there for the breakfast, right? No, I'm really confused. Anyway, it was great. Glad to hear it. Well, I did not have any committee. Santos?
I didn't have any.
All right, flip it on the page. We come to number eleven, receive information from county employees. Anybody not on the agenda? Okay.
Oh, I would like to say something.
Yes.
Just so everybody knows, the public knows, you can begin absentee voting today in the auditor's office for the upcoming city school election on November fifth, two thousand nineteen. And you can either vote by mail by sending, mailing us a request in writing, or you can vote in office in person between now and November fourth. I had to close the business on November fourth. And then you have, if you're going to do it by mail, you have to return it postmarked by November fourth to us, or if you hand carried in, it has to be here by the close of polls at eight o'clock on November fifth.
Great.
School board and?
School board and city election.
Yeah.
City and school.
I grabbed the second part.
Yeah. Well, we call it city school.
Yeah, this is the first year that they're combined, so.
And, and I would warn people who are going to the polls to please confer, you know, look at their card or look at, or call us to make sure they know where they go to vote, because a lot of locations outside of Muscatine have changed.
Right. So, but that applies on polling day on November?
On, that applies on November fifth.
So, for today, you can start coming down to the yard's office to vote in person or to collect, or to, you can write in to order your absentee ballot.
Right.
Thank you very much, bud. Anyone else? Items with the administration office, number twelve. Twelve A, discussion and possible action to approve a letter of support for an exploratory effort to form a Mississippi River ports of eastern Iowa and western Illinois port statistical area.
This item was placed on the agenda at Jeff Thorson's request. I included the email that he had sent me asking to have it included. I really don't have any more information than that.
So, I think this is something we've talked about at ByState and just the need to start gathering statistics. We've heard talk about the possible port here, but gathering statistics will help us not only make the case to businesses, but to governmental entities that would help fund it. So, seems to be a necessary step to getting the process to at least explore to move along.
And it's for quite a wide stretch of the Mississippi River.
Correct. The map shows it going from Dubuque all the way down to Keokah.
Yeah, yeah. And it's a matter of looking at all the entities that could, along that area that would be, use the ports throughout that area to look at the sheer volume, just like you said, or government assistance and being able to utilize this. So, yeah, I was at that meeting with Jeff as well. And it's a very positive thing, I think.
Yeah.
And I would move to approve.
Scott has moved. Second?
I'll second.
Santos has seconded.
I've been involved quite a bit in the whole court. Initial discussions. I had a lot of discussions, but I think there is a lot to do with that regardless of if it is. But there is a lot of businesses that can take advantage of the cost, plus giving businesses options for freight versus just rail or truck or, you know, semis or whatnot. Giving like the option for cost, move goods in and out of Muscatine plus I. And this is definitely something that is valid, at least doing the initiative to start looking into potentials.
So, we have motion. Scott has seconded. By Santos, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is approved. Unless there's any objections, I'm going to exercise a little bit of privilege and skip B for just a second so we can take care of C and D under item twelve. Anybody have a problem with that? Okay, so twelve C is action authorizing the renewal of the Muscatine County flexible benefit plan for two thousand twenty, and setting the open enrollment period for October twenty-first, two thousand nineteen, to November eighth, two thousand nineteen. So, Santos's move?
Second.
Scott has seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. And twelve D, reviewing the health and dental fund balance for the quarter ending September thirtieth, two thousand nineteen.
And as you can see, we continue to hold our own or actually gain a little.
Okay. Is there anything else under?
I'm just, I wanted to let you know, we currently have an opening on the Board of Health. I had advertised for that and we got nobody, we got no applications, no interest. So, I'll be re-advertising and I've reached out to the Board of Health to encourage them to talk to anybody they know that they think might be a good fit for that board.
What kind of qualifications are we looking for?
They just have to be a resident in Muscatine County.
All right. So, if anyone out there has any interest concerning on the Board of Health, please notify.
Didn't contact my office.
Please notify Nancy, our administrator. Okay, now we'll jump back up to item twelve B, which is discussion regarding the request of fiscal nineteen twenty, three hundred eleven thousand, three hundred dollar transfer payment to the eastern Iowa mental health region. I've asked Felicia Topper, our Director of Community Services, and I know there's another part of that title that I always forget, so I apologize. But essentially, she's here to explain a little bit about our financial situation, the region's financial situation. And I anticipate that this is something we will need to approve or deny as a board. And we're tentatively setting that for next week. So, Felicia, do you want to take it away?
I can do that. Did you send out the, I think I sent out the whole spreadsheet to the board. I thought I should probably help you with a copy. This is the, this is most recent funding projection that was given to management team. And one of the things that I asked about, Supervisor Mather was at the board, regional board meeting, and he asked very directly about the three hundred eleven thousand. And the fiscal agent, David Farmer, said, well, you can get that money back. Well, if you take a look at the first lines, particularly line six, go clear across to F by twenty, and this is where the three hundred eleven thousand will come from. Column R. Line six, column R. And you'll notice that's a negative balance. And David Farmer emailed me back and basically said that all of the other counties, if Muscatine needed money in FY twenty, that all of the other counties would have to put in additional money above and beyond their current tax revenue for this year to make up the difference. And if you take a look at line thirty, column R, we're going to have a balance at, by fiscal year, two thousand twenty, we're going to have fifty-eight thousand dollars.
Out of a budget of?
Well, we have expenditures of about one point five million and change.
So, about one thirty is what we're operating at?
Yes. It's technically four point two nine percent. And the legislature allows us to hold up to forty percent fund balance. That's nowhere near, even a twenty percent fund balance. So, part of the issue is, is that the twenty eighty agreement that you all signed says very specifically, it has a very specific formula, and the specific formula says that anything above and beyond our expenditures, our budget, and the amount that we're allowed to hold as a surplus goes to the region. Well, this is well beyond that. You're talking about taking your tax revenue and turning it over to the region to pay their bills. And they need it to pay the bills. You can see along the line where they are in terms of cash flow. And you can see in December, column J, line six, where they are in the administrative line.
And they're assuming no expenses from the property on contract after December.
Correct.
That's why it appears to hold steady for several months there. But if I could interject, so essentially, the region with the three hundred eleven thousand they requested from us that we barely have is going to be four hundred thousand dollars negative by this time next year.
In administration for money to pay back to the counties.
Correct.
They're going to have a grand total, if you look at line forty-two, column R, they're going to have a fund balance of one million, three hundred sixty-eight thousand, one hundred and sixty-two.
And they won't receive revenue. And that's, that's on July one, June thirtieth.
Yes.
They won't receive revenue until the end of September.
Correct.
Which means, and the alarm bells that we've been getting from the region is that they will run out of money before then. They will be unable to pay current bills, pay, make payroll, that sort of thing. So, they, we're looking at a fiscally insolvent region even with our money. So, this notion that give us the money now, and if you need it, then we will vote on whether to give it back to you, is somewhat moot because they don't have it back to us. And they would have to ask other counties to chip in to give us money. And the only county that's going to have a projected fund balance over that forty percent, so in other words, counties are required to kick anything to the region they have in excess of a forty percent fund balance, would be Jackson County, Cedar County.
Cedar.
And they're going to be at forty-one point four percent, which means they have all of, yeah, one percent of their tiny budget to kick back, which, you know, is not, you know, one fortieth of the two and two point six they have is less than ten thousand dollars. So, we're going to be asked here to make a hundred and a half of that annual payment of three hundred eleven, one hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. It's going to leave us fiscally insolvent if we make that payment, as I understand, is that correct, Felicia? By the time that the fiscal year rolls around. The region will still be fiscally insolvent. And I understand tight budget, but what has perked us in looking at all this is we did not learn of the region's projected fiscal insolvency until September twenty-third.
Correct.
So, we've been making budgets and making projections and analyses without being told that the region was out of money. We were assured the region still had, you know, that it was bad, that we still had a year, year and a half. And now we're just finding out about this. And that makes me very angry. I'd asked Felicia to request a three-year projection from our financial agent, fiscal agent. And we got the response back that we can't even conceive of making a three-year projection because the legislature keeps changing the law. projection because the legislature keeps changing the law, which to me is no excuse for not planning ahead. So what I'd like to do is invite conversation about what the board thinks in terms of whether we should be making this payment. And I know the fiscal agent has asserted that our 2080 agreement with the region requires us to make this payment. Our analysis is that it does not, it only requires us to turn over to the region anything we have in excess of forty percent fund balance, which nope, Cedar County is within sniffing distance of.
Felicia, you said that, the fiscal agent said that, what did you say, said that he would pay us back if we needed it, what we agreed towards solvency?
At the regional board meeting, Supervisor Mather asked the question, if we give you the three hundred eleven thousand dollars, are we going to get it back? And basically David Farmer said, yeah, just give it to us and we'll give it back to you.
That does require a vote by the governing board, and in this case would require other counties to pony up in excess of what they've already budgeted. Now, I will also observe, we did not budget, we explicitly budgeted not to make this three hundred eleven thousand of expenditure.
Right.
So it is not in our budget, because even with things the way they are, as you see, we're, we're still, we're left with fifty-eight thousand, which is not, you know, does not keep the lights on.
So if we were to potentially not make this payment, what does the governing body from the region have over us?
Well, there was resolution that was passed that said that each county would put in their entire tax amount, but in my humble opinion, a resolution does not supersede or take over a 2080 agreement that was signed by every board and every board member. Go ahead.
I was just saying, in addition, that was approved by the governing board. The governing board has no authority even under the 2080 to tell each county what it's going to do with its tax money. So it'd be like if, if a single one of us went to some group and promised them a bunch of funding.
That's what I'm trying to do, that's with David Farmer.
He's the, he's the sherry of Scott County. He's also the sherry of the region. Now, in the, over the past several years, because of the tax and cap situation, Muscatine has contributed what, over three million dollars we've put into the region. Last year, we extracted about seven hundred thousand dollars of our excess money that we contributed.
And what does the region say about that?
Well, the region wishes we hadn't done it because the region doesn't have any money. If, and, and the next question I think that gets asked is what happens if the region doesn't make their cash flow, and the answer is they have to make more cuts. We had on September 23rd and sixteen very difficult meetings making cuts. We were told those cuts would save solvency, and then right after the meeting, we learned that they wouldn't. And I am no fan of cutting, but I advocated greater cuts than were made because I recognized this wasn't going to be in any, in any way sustainable. So we have, basically, we have a region that takes in nine million dollars, spends twelve million, and is going to have less than a million and a half in the bank, so obviously then they can't continue to run that kind of deficit. I would represent to you that the people in the region, both other, other members of the governing board, I'd say a majority of the management team, which consists of people, Felicia's counterparts in other counties, and the regional CEO, hopes and prays for a legislative fix to this. Now, in talking with our legislators, I put the chances of that somewhere between slim and none for various reasons. First, the legislature just is not, the legislators were not thrilled with the idea that we gave away one point three million in grants last year, which were one-time funding. Now, at the time, we were supposed to be cutting down our fund balance, so we had a large amount of money to quote unquote, get rid of. I still voted against that because I think we needed the money in the bank. Very few, if any, of the other regions complied with that spend-down provision, instead of planning to spend it down all at once. So lo and behold, the law changed, all those other regions still have money in the bank. We were one of the very few that has this insolvency issue. I think, is it only Des Moines that has this issue?
Whole counties work in their way in that direction.
Yeah. So we are one or two of fourteen, so there's not a general problem. Number two, I know our lobbying approaches at the, at the region have turned off some of the legislators. And basically, I've, I've been told that not to expect a legislative hail mary, you know, with, under the two-minute warning. So the region's looking at some severe service cuts. Some of these programs that we've just implemented, we're going to have to quit. If, frankly, I don't, I don't know that there's an if, that that's just going to have to happen. I don't see any other alternative. So that even begs the question as to whether, you know, Muscatine benefits long-term from staying in the region, which I think is another discussion we should have in the future. But right now, I guess we wanted to lay before the board and the public the amount of surprise that we have from these financial numbers that we've so recently received, and to prepare the board for a vote next week on whether or not to authorize this out-of-budget expenditure. We have invited David Farmer, the fiscal agent to come. He said he'd like the CEO to be there, Lori Eland, but she's unavailable. We said, well, you know, we can't really change the meeting date because this is, this is something that's coming up. So I don't know if he's going to show up or not. I think we behoove him to, but that's where we are.
And he has sent us an invoice for half of the three hundred eleven thousand dollars.
And we've, and I've been clear in almost every meeting, I mean, we told him when budget process was completed earlier in the year, we said, we did not budget that three hundred eleven, don't ask for it, don't assume it, don't include it in your budget. I've said, I won't say it every single region meeting since then, but almost every region meeting since then, I've told him and the other governing board members, we don't have it, don't count on it, don't budget it, nevertheless, it's here in the budget, which is frustrating. It's all the more frustrating, given the fact that Scott County has, and this is historically, that they have sucked up a large number of the dollars that Muscatine, Clinton, and other counties have put in. So in effect, we've been subsidizing Scott County to the tune of over two million dollars over the last five years. And that's just Scott County services. The region services that our money is supposed to go to, or if I'm not mistaken, Felicia, concentrated heavily in Scott County. There are some benefits for the region, but...
There are several services that are in Scott County that we have access to, but they are not located here. We have primary crisis services, which means we have coordination for the jail, we have coordination for commitments and that sort of thing. We also have the twenty-four hour crisis team that'll come out and help our folks in this community, and we have the peer center at MCSA.
So, if I'm correct, we're not the only county that they're asking, so Scott County, they're asking, they're asking now for three forty-five? And Clinton, or they, or how, are we the only county that they're reaching out for this on this extra one?
No, no, you're asking, you're asking from everyone.
And I think, is it on a per capita basis they're asking? They've identified the amount and then divided it up per capita, and that's where they kept the mess.
So what are they asking for Scott County? I'm sort of confused on that number. Are they three forty-five, because I don't see their number, or are they one point two five?
They're the one-two-five.
And they're going to have a fund balance of one million, one hundred and eleven, four seventy-nine, which is twenty-one percent, which is the twenty percent where they wanted to be when they started the whole funding cut thing.
So Felicia, for the public, what is the, what is the cause of this region's lack of planning or money or need of, or what, what created this? That they just all of a sudden started paying, we, we budgeted and now we're out of money and we need more money? In your opinion?
Part of it is, you cannot run a twelve million dollar budget expense and only take nine million. That won't last forever. That's the first thing. The second thing is, the legislature said we had to get down to a twenty percent fund balance, but we didn't have to get down to that fund balance until 2021. So we had plenty of time, and I'm a budgetary conservative. In my opinion, we could have waited to that very last year, that very last six months to see where we were, knowing we had a twelve million dollar expenses and a nine million dollar budget, to find out where we really were in terms of having a balance. And then the legislature last year allowed that balance to go up to forty percent, in which case there would have been no reason to cut anything.
And instead of waiting, they granted those extra dollars out to, to providers, to, to bring the fund balance down right away.
In my opinion, it's a philosophical way that you run a budget. You don't run a budget deficit. You don't automatically do that.
I guess I, I'm, I'm just taken aback by that. I don't understand how this group cannot budget cut themselves instead of coming over and asking us to come up with funds. Who holds them accountable?
Well, the governing board is, is the body that makes the decisions. The governing board has operated...
I guess what I'm checking is, if they're running twelve million dollar budget with a nine million dollar cap, however, who comes back and asks them, how did you play that? Why don't we cut some funding here, cut funding there? Because obviously, we're the ones that are going to have to cut funding for our taxpayers. So who holds them accountable and says, hey, maybe we need to cut three million dollars out of our budget, so we don't come back and ask the taxpayers to come up with, come up with funds for us?
There isn't anyone. I mean, DHS has to approve the budget, but they don't do anything like long-term oversight of it.
So there's no legislature about that?
Nope. And that's why I'm particularly, given that the governing board is the only body that regulates this, and I would, I would submit that the governing board is made up of relatively fiscally conservative people. I feel like this information wasn't made available to us.
I, I guess my, my frustration from what you're explaining to me is, though, I don't understand if that governing board understands the ripple effect that they do to our, our government, what it does overall for us.
I think they do. But, but let me explain. The governing board that approved the budgets, I think, had a vastly different set of financial information presented to them. I don't feel that we were informed of the desperation of this situation until extremely recently. I, the information that I received indicated we had two more years and, and what we were doing was trying to meld the spend-down requirement with achieving a new level of services. So yes, we were running a deficit, but that deficit was being managed in such a way so that by the time that the budgetary restrictions kicked into place, that we'd be more or less in line with them and be running a neutral budget at that time. That is a completely different picture from what we're receiving now, and I'm distressed by it, I'm upset.
Well, they're asking for three hundred thousand, or, yeah, three hundred thousand from us, or are they coming up with the other two point seven million that they're short? Scott County, Clinton, Cedar, everybody's pulling in, three forty-one, one thirty-four, three eleven, one point two five from Scott.
The la, the second-to-last line, the net transfers each block.
Loans and pretenses.
Show what they're asking for from each county. So lines eleven, seventeen, twenty-three, twenty-nine, thirty-five.
Yeah, that's what I'm calling them.
In addition to that, they're looking for fund balance to bridge the gap. Because that, those net transfers only add up to two million.
Felicia, what, what, what's going to be cut if we were to look at this? Do you have a, do you have a list of items that we would be cutting from our, our budget as far as services?
As far as our budget is concerned, our local budget.
Correct.
We'd probably be losing staff.
Wow, if we make the transfer.
It takes us down to where it would be difficult to make payroll.
And it's not simply a matter of transferring money from one fund to another, cover a shortfall. We are a cap. We can't allocate more money to this.
Well, obviously, this is something for the ID to take time.
Of course, that's why we wanted to do this today and look at a vote next week.
Can you provide us with a list of those services that would be cut?
Yes.
Plus payroll and your opinion?
Certainly can.
Well, we're going to have David Farmer here next week. You've invited him.
Yeah. Last we knew, he was not showing up.
Right, I think he made it pretty clear, he doesn't, he will not come unless we reschedule this so Lori Eland is available, which causes me some concern as well that we can't have access to the fiscal agent for, for a group that we're providing a large amount of money to. That would be like me not allowing anybody to talk to Sherry unless I was there as well, and I don't, that's concerning.
He's the financial, he's the financial person. He should be able to answer any of these questions.
Yeah.
The regional board meets next Monday?
It's the third, yeah, no, that'll be the second one. It won't meet till the 21st.
And anybody is allowed to show up to that meeting? So if county boards of supervisors want to show up to that meeting and ask those questions, they're welcome to do that. I think we're also looking at trying to schedule an all county boards of supervisors meeting as well, so that all the board of supervisors from each county meet together, and I don't know when that'll take place.
When was, when was the meeting, you said the 21st?
The regional board meeting will be the 24th. Yes, the governing board meeting. The 21st was, I'm sorry, it's for like a month, two weeks.
If we were to default not pay, what happens?
Then the region has to make more cuts than it otherwise is planning on making, which it still isn't planning on making. At least, I don't know that they've identified cuts that are going to, that we have to be made, whether or not they make that payment.
We have not had that discussion.
As I recall, you asked for the governing board meeting to include financial matters on their discussion agenda and were revoked.
Yes. I asked for financials to be put on our management agenda, and it was not put on there. I asked about a three-year plan, budget plan, and I was told that's not done because of the legislature and it changes its mind.
And if we make this payment, our chance of actually getting that money back, zero needed is, zero.
If the projection holds true, there are going to be deficit, three hundred ninety-one thousand, four hundred and sixty-one dollars. And in the email, David Farmer told me very clearly that the other counties, if we needed the money, would have to kick in additional funds. So if they're already kicking in their levy, I'm not sure where the additional funds will come from.
Clinton County has no money to kick in. They are already looking at a deficit. Uh, well, excuse me, they'll have a hundred and fifty-six thousand in the bank.
But that isn't anywhere close to twenty percent.
Oh, no. No, no, that's only eleven percent. Yeah. So it's, um, we... We'd basically be going hat-in-hand to other regions, or, excuse me, other counties, asking their taxpayers to pay for ours. Which I don't think is fair either.
What, they don't have, they won't have the ability to do it, even if they wanted to.
Right.
Because they're in the same situation we are.
So our credit limit has been reached. And, uh, there's, there's no more money.
Can we need to have Alan or somebody look at that if we choose the topic?
We sure can, um, Felicia, I've gone over the twenty-eight E and the resolution. And I'm very confident we reached the same conclusion. The only language of obligation in the twenty-eight E, and we can send that to you too, to everybody, uh, specifically says, uh, money's kept over, basically, in, in, in excess of the allowable fund balance now. So we're allowed to keep a surplus up to a certain level, and then anything above that is what we kick to the region. That's historically what has happened through the... Nancy, could you submit that to Alan?
I will do that.
Thank you very much.
And I will send out the twenty-eight E agreement with that area highlighted so you can see how it reads.
Is there any other information I would like?
Do we know what their budgeting costs, that, I mean, is this what they've always budgeted, twelve million dollars?
Well, it's ramped up now because it took several years for some of the services to come online. So, the capacity to, to, so basically, we built that much money into the budget. Never actually spent it because those services weren't available, you know, the, the providers had to ramp them up. But, yes.
So my, my thinking from the down-the-road type thought, mentality right now is that this is really what their budgeting were, we're not even in the same game.
No.
I mean, they're, they're obviously looking at a different type of, like, capital budget per year that we, we will always be in the same boat this time next year and the year after that, unless we come up with some sort of plan to either start a message to them in regards to they need to cut budget, or we, we run our own. But, I think those are discussions that we'll have to have. And, and I'd like to review that twenty-eight E as well too, and have a discussion from Alan's perspective in regards to what his opinion is, because obviously, if we make a decision like that, I hope that group understands that we're starting a message that we're not gonna continue to let this happen to our taxpayers. We must continue to provide services for our people. This is obviously something that shit, you know, scares me in regards to their, their budgeting, if they don't even understand. They say, well, legislature's changing, well, they change for us every year, and we still manage, per year, per budget. That's not an excuse that they can't look three years out.
For anything.
It is, it is, and, and that's why I'm saying, if they're twelve million, that this is gonna happen next year, they're gonna come back and say, now it's fifty-eight dollars per person to, to do that. It's only maybe thirty-five for yourself here and lots of teams, you need to subsidize us as well too.
And we're capped at thirty-sixty-eight.
And that's really where, where we need to be, we need to be thinking about that. Yeah, I'd like to review some of that before we make any decisions on something like this.
And just to throw into a piece of the mast, to answer that. Number one, half of the deficit they still have in the bank. In other words, we can, we still have in the region's offers enough to mitigate half that deficit spending. Next year, all that three million is gonna have to be cut. They're not proposing to cut three million this year. The other thing is that we haven't even talked about the children's mental health system yet. Which is being thrown off the region's, but as yet, no additional funding. So, add all that together, and this region is in total hurt, I think, unfortunately.
But that's why we need to start thinking about it now, having those discussions now in regards to what those options are.
Yep.
There's gonna be some stance of changes, because this has no chance to ever work, ever. Has no chance. We need to, we need to start thinking about what we're going to do in this county in regard to, uh, moving forward, because it's very obvious to me that this certain regionalization structure has no chance to ever work. That's just my opinion.
Alan, I think, um, other regions that have like-sized counties are probably doing better than those that have urban counties sitting in them. Because the urban counties are where all of the services are, that all the small counties can access. And so, they take a huge amount of resources. And as long as the region is softened, it's not a problem. But it's at the point, an example is, um, there are other regions that have, are able to levy the maximum forty-seven, twenty-eight. So, they're in a completely different position than the eastern region is with the cap that we have. But regardless, from a budgetary philosophical standpoint, you don't spend more than you take in. And you plan at least three years out, and you let the legislature do whatever it's going to do. And you kind of surf that wave and stick to that three-year plan. But at this point, the region has never had a three-year plan. And it doesn't appear to be on the agenda either.
Well, if you could provide us with that information, Felicia, I'd like to see the, what, what cuts you would be looking at if we were to do that. Payroll, headcount, and, um, basically copy that twenty-eight E and, uh, and the recommendation. Counties like ourselves, uh, through this whole system, will be asked to subsidize your guys' counties. That's how the whole structure's set up. It's very obvious.
Unless the urban counties were sitting on a huge surplus, that would be true. If the urban county was sitting on a huge surplus, then the smaller counties would be fine.
That's not the way it's rolling.
That's not the, the eastern Iowa region.
Nor will that be the way it'll roll. What you see is what you get. And it's not gonna change, from what I see.
And this isn't a one-time mean year. Oh, this is, this is...
The sports have a leaner yet years to come. This is only gonna get worse, and it's not gonna get better. That's very obvious. That's why we need to, we need to go.
Thank you.
Thank you, Felicia, for coming in.
Thank you for watching.
Felicia loves to bring us good news.
Eh? Or would love to.
Any other questions on that issue or discussion? Not any other issues at all? Not, or adjourned?